Okay, we have a call. This is 6:31, 6:32. Can I get a motion to open the meeting?
Yeah.
Can I get a second?
Sure.
Thank you. This meeting of the SAG-Harbor Board of Education is now called to order. Please rise for the president.
I am the President of the United States of America and the Republic of America. I stand on my nation under God, in the wisdom of the Lord, in the reading of justice for all.
I don't know one who can't sing. Oh, who says, oh, fuck, you got me. I just want to sing that bit.
Is there anyone here who would like to address the board for public input number one? So, no public input number one, then we will move right into the superintendent's report. And we will start with A.C.K. and their updates. I'm going to go ahead and take the podium. Thanks. I just want to remind the trustees that under our board operating procedure, we'll observe our questions until the final presentation unless there is a clarification and we can make a point of information.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Again, I'm Bill Sands and with me is Edgbert Howard. We are with the BCI Group out of Hampton. Real quick update regarding Stella Maris project. We have an agenda to present. We will talk a little about the schedule and how the project is progressing. The overall SED final submission paperwork that we're going to talk about. We're going to show you the examples of the paperwork that needs to be completed with signatures. We are going to talk a little bit about the steps regarding renaming of the building. We will talk a little bit about the health, a little bit regarding the imagery. We'll come back and do a little review of what we've got in our project documents regarding the look of the facility, future look, and then we'll obviously answer some questions we're working on. So I will pass it over to Ed. Talk a little bit about.
So, one of the things that we wanted to do this time is update you on recent developments with the schedule. As we talked about last time, there was, there were changes at State Education Department's review process. Their third-party reviews are not in place yet. The process that they identified before had to be canceled and now they're coming up with a new process that is yet to be determined. One of the things that we did have the fortune of doing though was contacting the Director of Facilities Planning at SED, talking with them about Stella Maris, about the fact that it's an early education center that has interesting components in it and can be looked at in a little bit different way than a normal elementary school or let's say a middle school or high school. One of the nice things is that we have been granted a building aid review and preliminary planning review as a face-to-face review. So, we're actually jumping ahead in the process a little bit, which is a great thing to report tonight. We have a face-to-face review on December 12th. We actually are meeting with the Director of Facilities Planning and our project manager for the Stella Maris project, which is Mary Mosher at the State Education Department. So, our actual review process has begun, which is a great thing to report tonight.
Would you like to say that a little louder and a little prouder? Our actual process has begun.
Right, exactly. So, the rest of the schedule is as we reported before, but we're really happy that we can actually begin the review process. One of the things about that though is we figured it'd be good to go over the final submission paperwork just so that the board and people in the public who are interested can see kind of the way that the State Education Department looks at a project as far as their final paperwork. And one of the first forms that comes up, I apologize, it is a little bit hard to see the small text, but one of the first things that will require the signature of the superintendent and of the board president is the financial project form. And on the financial project form, it does outline the project finances. And on this first page basically talks about, and again, I apologize for the small text, but your total referendum authorization amount is recorded. Also recorded is what the actual construction value is with incidental costs for the capital improvements part of the project. As you see here, the signatures that will require from the superintendent and the board president. And also, if we have any consultants on the project as our licensed architect or architect of record, if we need support from another firm, we actually have to record that for State Education Department. So, as we've discussed before, our firm does use Elwin and Palmer structural engineers as a support firm. So, Dave Elwin is the structural engineer for the project and gets recorded on this form. In addition to that, it breaks out what we see for each contract, what the value of the general construction contract is, mechanical, plumbing, electrical, site work, also the incidental costs for district expenditures, general overhead for the project, our architecture and engineering fees. They're all recorded on this form for State Education Department's review. Now, one of the things that you'll notice when you do look at this form is that it is for the full referendum authorization. So, we may have talked about before about how we build in contingencies into the number so that we're safe and that we're sure that on bid day we can award the contract safely and it accounts for all costs that could be part of the project. That's the numbers that you're seeing here. So that SED knows this is the maximum amount that you will spend on the capital improvements project. So the contingencies are all built into these numbers. The second form that requires signature and submission is the scope of project form. This form actually includes a lot of information about the Stella Maris building, about what type of category project it is. As a, for instance, if it's a historical building, will it require a historical review? Which actually, we've already done. We've heard from the State Historic Preservation Office and we have their approval on the project. So, but you'll see that category is checked off. If the building is 50 years old or older, it will require that review. If certain components such as the septic system that's at the building is involved in the project, there is a particular permitting process that's required. So, that's checked off here. In addition, you'll see as it moves down, has seeker been completed, which it has been. The board is actually the seeker agency and we've completed the Type II NECDK statement of impact. So, that's all recorded on the scope of project form. On the second page, there's some information about square footage of the building, what grade levels will be at the building, the type of, the amount of square footage that's part of the renovation area. And then also, the most important part at the very bottom, it actually has a narrative that we type in of all of the scope pieces that are involved in the capital improvements project. And this form again requires the superintendent's signature and the board president's signature. The last piece that requires signature that you'll be seeing is the State Smart Growth Public Infrastructure Impact Statement. Long-term, that basically just means we are being as sustainable as possible in this project. And really, it's, this form is to ensure State Education Department that there is no unnecessary construction going on. Part of this for our particular project is a real easy one because we're reusing an existing building. So, it is a very sustainable piece in that the district's expansion is taking into account that there's a building that can be used and can be renovated for its expansion of its programs. So, this form is just saying, that's what we're doing. We're using existing infrastructure for the project and for the expansion of the district's programs. And that again is signed by the superintendent of the district. Another piece that we just wanted to update you tonight that the superintendent asked us to just give some information on is potential ideas for the renaming of the Stella Maris building. We have worked with a number of districts on a naming process for buildings and I can tell you there's a thousand and one ways to do this. We've had the wide gamut of all the way from something as complex as actually holding a vote district-wide for what the name will be, all the way to something as simple as the superintendent literally saying, "I want to name the building this." So, although those are the extremes and the two basically polar opposites, we do have a few processes that we've seen works quite efficiently and actually does kind of take the middle of the road on that technique so that you are getting some feedback from the public, but yet you're efficient and have a committee in place that can actually make a decision fairly expeditiously so that it's not wasting resources or wasting time as part of the project. The three ones that we've outlined here is, the first is a superintendent-led project where first what can be done is actually a public survey. This survey can take a number of different forms, whether it's a survey online on the website or a mailer that can go home with the children, or even a newsletter that can go to the different constituents in different parts of the district. That survey comes back and then the administrators and stakeholders actually take all of that information and whittle it down to two or three options for the naming process. At that point, the superintendent can make the decision on the best recommendation and present it to the board for their acceptance. The second process is very similar to that, again, starting with a survey, but the, what really takes place then is the board would handle that whittling down to two or three options and then the board would take their own vote as to what they feel is the most appropriate name for the new name for the building. And then the last one, which is actually the one that we've implemented the most, especially with districts that have a facilities committee in place, is to actually do the survey process from the public, but then hand over that survey information to the facilities committee. They would actually refine it to two or three names and then select, vote on the one that they feel is the best recommendation, present that to the board for their acceptance. So, that last process is the one, if you have a facilities committee, which you do, that's the one that we've seen most effective with other districts. And then the next piece, this is imagery. I thought there, I know there are some new members and some new community members here tonight and also some new stakeholders. So, we do have the design imagery that's part of our documents that I brought back so we can take a look at. And first and foremost, again, for this educational center is how the classroom would lay out. Again, both for pre-K and also for daycare, it's a similar setup, where each of the classrooms would have access to a handicap accessible toilet room that actually has fixtures appropriate for the children's, the age group of children that are in the spaces. And in the main room, you'll see that there's a variety of areas that are all based on different curricula that the teachers are trying to impart to the students. You would have an art center, you would actually have a reading area, a dramatic play area, and then a technology area, and also a large group meeting area with tables. What we try to do too is use the interior finishes such as the flooring, wall finishes, ceiling soffits, to denote these different areas so that it's not actually just one empty volume. One of the key concepts in any educational space design is to actually get the students to engage in the spaces and be interested in the spaces. So the vanilla box envelope doesn't really work. We want to create different areas and subdivisions within the main space to really get those students involved in the activity that's happening there. So, as you can see, this is what we're trying to do with some of the casework, furniture, and different finishes. As I said again, with the daycare, a similar layout. Here are some elevations that you can see to the technology center. One of the things too, in some previous slides I'll show you too, here we see it manifesting in the door, is a nautical theme that we're bringing into Stella Maris. Again, kind of playing off of the history here at SAG-Harbor, but also too, developing forms and shapes that the kids can get interested in. The metaphor is basically as they come into the primary education wing, it's as if you're going down to a dock with different ships off of the harbor. And so each classroom represents a ship and that's seen in the metaphor, or that metaphor is seen in the door design with the window lights as sails and the door materials being accentuated with the different wood materials in the classrooms. And again, here's just some pictures of different casework pieces, different furniture pieces being planned out for the spaces. Again, an interesting thing to note too, you'll, you may be aware of the title blocks that you see and just the arrangement of how these sheets are oriented. These are actually 11 by 17 sign-off packets that actually go to all the stakeholders that are involved in the education processes in these spaces. Whether it's the daycare, daycare providers or the pre-kindergarten teachers and administrators, they will all actually have a buy-in and sign-off on those spaces so that they're well aware of what the design entails and the different components in the space. Here you'll see some floor patterns that, in the different toilet room areas. And again, this is as if you're looking down on the floor itself. This is as if you're looking at the walls. All of the bathroom finishes will have tile walls and tile floors. Not only to really kind of make a nice aesthetic for the children, but also for hygiene and for the durability and cleanability of the spaces. And again, here's that primary corridor that we were talking about with each of the classrooms having the different ship motifs. One of the interesting things too is this actually works along with the children's identification of classrooms. You'll notice that none of the designs for the sailing vessels are the same. The idea being that each classroom has a different identifiable shape that the children can relate to as to which classrooms they're going to. This is a site plan actually showing a lot of the site work that we're doing. One of the key features that I'll note first is actually the elevator addition that we're doing off the back of the courtyard. The reason we're actually selecting this space is we are hitting all three levels of the building. The first floor main level of the education area, the auditorium, which is actually down a half level, and then also the basement level, which is down another half level. So the elevator addition at this key nexus point will actually allow us to hit all three of those levels and make all levels handicap accessible. In addition, we're also making these two entry points with some minimal grading and ramp work handicap accessible in the front. And then in the rear, by modifying the drive that goes across, we will be making the rear entrance handicap accessible as well. So, not only are we going by the state minimum of the 50% entrances, we're going above and beyond that for the children so that there is actually even more entrances with minimal site work that will be handicap accessible. In addition, the drive now will extend from Love Lane all the way over to East Union Street. And currently, what's a stair right now will be turned into a full access drive so that we'll have better site circulation and a potential secure drop-off in the back of the building. As I mentioned, down on the lower level, we are bringing over the business office into the Stella Maris building. This is a layout of the office with the main business manager and their staff along with a conference room, a main reception area, and also a main file storage area. And here's just some, again, an example of a packet that they would sign off on. It even shows them down to the detail of their casework that they're getting for their file storage. Also, the district office and the superintendent's office is moving over. Because of the arrangement of the school, the superintendent's office actually will be on the main building level again for administration of that level as an added security. In addition to that, the main entrance will have a secure lockdown vestibule with a security office that people will have to sign in at the window before they're allowed to proceed into the building. And that was just a quick overview of some of the designs. Do we have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions on the first part, the SED department final paperwork?
Yeah, I do. On the scope and sequence portion of your presentation, you mentioned that the permits for the onsite sewage system, is that a pre-existing sewage system?
It is.
And that is, the Suffolk County Health Department is?
Yes, Department of Health, yep, that we're working with currently.
Okay, so that isn't going to be a major expense in this particular project. What would it have cost, I shouldn't say it like that, I don't mean to put words in my mouth, but what would it have cost to hook up to the sewage system from the SAG-Harbor Village?
So, that's an interesting question and somewhat difficult to answer because of, we know the, we know the defined cost that it would take for Stella Maris to hook up to the municipal system in front of their building, in front of the building proper, and to go down to the street to the point at which the residential zone occurs. The piece that we don't know because it's impossible to say without the residents' approval is the connection from that point, another 100 feet down, which is actually where the closest municipal tie-in is, which is right outside of the Watch Case apartment complex. So, one of the things that would have to happen for that tie-in is each of the residences on that street would have to approve the tie-in and also buy in with their own money for their tie-ins to the municipal system. So, that's the piece that we can't really identify because of that process, how that would work.
So, if we wanted to hook up, just say hypothetically, those houses would have to hook up in order for this to happen?
Correct.
Okay. Wow, all right, thank you.
Now, the only other thing that could happen is the municipality bringing the sewer line up that street of their own accord. That's a different approval process with the residences because then they wouldn't have to hook up. It's not privately driven, because even though the district is a public entity, it's seen as a private project to connect that system. So, that's, if someday the sewer actually does come up the street, then it would just be a connection out to the street.
And you have the number on that currently?
Yes, correct.
And what is that?
That's approximately the cost that we have in for the renovation of the current septic system. And actually, just so everyone's aware too, we actually have that kind of in mind. So, how we're renovating the existing septic system is to try and do it, as we say in C-Tour, in the place of where it is now, to leave the front connection open if they were to connect to Division Street. So, in the future, if you would convert over to the sewer system, that pathway would still be available for you.
Be an easy reroute. Okay, very good. I have another question. Would Love Lane have to be widened or improved by us?
Nope, there's actually no work for Love Lane that is required at this point.
In regards to the renaming approaches?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, can I go to the money?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Can you go to the page two of the money?
Sure. The SED form?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, number one, I'll applaud you because it adds up perfectly. And so if I go back to my notes, the renovation totals, including hard costs and soft costs, were $6,933,000 and your numbers right there come to $6,901. So that's perfect. The question is, the 419-732 that says site development, roads, walkways, playfields?
Yes.
Why is that not above the line?
So, an interesting thing at State Education Department is that any site work that they consider, or that's part of a project, they consider it as an incidental cost. Even if it's a prime contractor, that you're bidding it out and they do site work, since it's not in the building proper, they consider it as a project incidental cost. So that's why you see it below in the site work section because that, this section up here is the building work. This section down here is incidentals.
Outside of the building?
Yep.
So, that's why it looks like it's in the quote "soft" costs?
Correct, yep. Because that's, that's the way the state looks at it.
That's the way it works. So that's, but the bottom line total comes in where it needs to be.
Is the exact same, yep.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the SED paperwork?
I want to congratulate you that you're having a face-to-face meeting on December 12th. That's great because if you're eyeball to eyeball with State Ed, I know how hard that is to have happen and how late some of these projects are in getting moving along. So, I don't know what you did to make that happen, but I'm just glad it's happening.
Well, we are, we are fortunate, we do a lot, as we had said before, our primary market is K through 12, so we do so much work with them that we're very familiar with the people that are there. So, we were fortunate that we got their approval when I asked if we could go and meet with them, so.
Well, I appreciate it because all, all the way along, you've been very conservative in your figures and in the work you've been doing. And Jennifer and I really appreciated that you've been very, told a very cautionary tale and you've meant that cautionary tale. And then when I see something like you're going to be meeting with them on December 12th and you were saying it could be so much further along, I think that just, we all need to understand that, you know, there's not always a lot of trust, you know, and so it just renewed my trust in everything you had to say.
We're going to keep pushing. We're going to keep pushing as much as we can.
Because it really means so much to this community that this, you know, project moves along, on time and on budget, so thank you.
And the October 2nd scenario perfectly matches the December 4th scenario, which is also something I appreciate.
Well, I also didn't kill trees by printing out because those, the other items you showed us, you really showed.
Yeah, that's, that's actually in your previous packet.
Packet, right.
So, yeah, but I thought it'd be good for, for new people to also see the design.
Moving forward to questions about the renaming approaches. I like that we have three nice approaches laid out for us. That's very helpful. I have one question about timing. Is there some sort of deadline that we have to have the exact name?
January 2019.
Actually, basically, yeah, that's, that's up to the board of when you would like to. It has no implication on State Education Department's review or approval.
Are there any other questions about the process?
No.
And do we have any other questions regarding the designs? I did have one question about the security office.
Yes.
And it's the entrance of the district office?
It's actually, and I apologize, it's because of how we did the packet, but it's the entrance to the main building. So, as you see here, this was the new handicap accessible ramp. This is the steps that come up from Division Street. And this is the double door where you go in the main entrance of, of the educational wing. As you go into there, you're locked down actually in a vestibule and you can't go any further until you sign in at the security window. Then digitally, they'll actually hit a button that will open these doors and you can actually go into. Or if you're visiting, let's say you're going to visit the business office, these doors will remain locked and the doors that will go down the stairs, because we've actually cordoned that off now with a new set of doors there, that door will open so that you can actually go down into the business office.
Now, what if we're visiting just the school, the classroom, or the gymnasium?
Yes.
How does that procedure work?
So, if you're, if you're actually visiting one of the educational spaces, you would have to go through that vestibule. And actually, this kind of, this doubles kind of in two parts. One is for the kindergarten students and for the school district's policies of making sure that all visitors are documented before they're in spaces that are with children. But also, it meets Office of Children and Family Services from New York State OGS, Office of Governmental Services, for daycare programs as well. It's the exact same requirement, is that adults cannot go into a facility for daycare without being documented. So, that's, that's actually what happens there. You would write your name down, show your driver's license, and then you're allowed through those doors into the primary education corridor.
And all the other outside exterior doors are locked?
Are locks, yep. There's also a separation between this wing and the auditorium wing as well. So, there's, if someone, first, let's say a teacher had a fob and was able to get in, into the auditorium space and prop the door or something for moving equipment, if someone went in, they couldn't get into the primary wing because there's actually lockdown doors that secure the auditorium area from the educational area. Or in the future, if the district uses the auditorium for, let's say, a Or, in the future, if the district uses the auditorium for, let's say, community events, the, the people in the community that are using that auditorium could not get into the primary education wing without the proper credentials.
That's great, thank you. Any other questions?
There's a question.
Can we wait for Public Enemy Two? Yeah, we'll wait for Public Enemy Two, and then you guys are still in the audience, right?
Yeah, we can stay.
You can be here.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thanks. All right, I think up next, we have the Rachel's Challenge overview.
Yeah. Great. Good evening. So, last year, I spoke to the board about our year-long goal, which was to do a review of our social-emotional programs here at Pearson. And I spoke about how that had added meaning after the spring of 2016, when we lost one of our community members. And also spoke that night about how we were taking a sort of year-term look at some things that we could do. That included presentations like Dr. Dewey and recently, Dr. Bellis. And then, longer term, what were our aspirations for how we could cultivate a very positive school culture here. I also reported to the board that night that I do have a lot of experience in working on school culture initiatives, and that from my perspective, Pearson has a highly positive school culture, characterized by very positive interactions between all of its members, very strong traditions and rituals that people enthusiastically engage in, and that that's really important. So, anything we were looking to do, we would look to maintain that and build from that. So, in, in the middle of this process last year, a community member and Pearson parent scheduled a meeting with Jeff and me. He had been the first responder the day that we lost a community member, and he had taken it very seriously, and done some research on how he could help, and had found different programs, and brought to us for our consideration, one of the programs that we were looking at, which is a nationally recognized program called Rachel's Challenge. He went on to, he's still working with them, and I believe has supported them financially, and been active with some of their local folks on spreading the program around, especially to needier districts. We, I, I spoke to you guys last year about how my ultimate goal was to have something that was really student-run, and something similar to a program that I participated in when I was in school. And it turned out that the Rachel's Challenge was the program that was best, the best fit to sort of kickstart that longer-term strategy. So, first, when we talk about school culture, a lot of times, there are a lot of education experts using iceberg metaphor, that you only really see about 10% of it. And those are sort of the rituals, the traditions, the interactions, the things that you can view in daily school life. But underneath that is, is the 90%, which are the values and the shared beliefs and the assumptions that make up really what that school culture ultimately is. Pearson enjoys a very positive school culture, but to cultivate and nurture that and make sure that we are always getting better at serving our students' social and emotional needs, I think it's very helpful to take a step back and dig deep into that, into those values and beliefs that undergird what is the culture we enjoy on a daily life in the school. Rachel's Challenge is a perfect opportunity for that to happen, for us to tend to our garden, if you will, to step back and look at what we value together as a community, and what's most important. I shared with the board last year that I thought the two defining characteristics of the school culture, and certainly the ones that we try and, and model in our interactions with students and with staff, are kindness and empathy. And Rachel's Challenge is very much about seeing to those values and, and taking a step back and looking at how well we embody them as a school community and as individuals within that community. So, the who is, it's a nationally respected, very well-respected. Dr. Robert Marzano, I added the quote in there, calls it the most powerful school intervention he's ever been a part of or seen. Dr. Marzano is a very well-respected author and education evidence-based researcher who has contributed a lot, especially over the last 20 years. And I think his endorsement there is important to share with you. What it consists of for us is on January 16th, we'll have two student presentations, and there'll also be an after-school training for different students that we gather based on interest, and this is about building that club. So, part of their model is that they form a Friends of Rachel Club. So, I think we're gonna riff off of that model a little bit, and we're gonna use their training to get that club started. But ultimately, the vision for that club will be much greater in terms of it being a student-run, student-led, peer-support club. This'll happen in Pearson Auditorium, there'll also be a community presentation in the evening, so members in the community will have an opportunity to come and, and see what the students did that day, and, and get a taste of, of what's going on and what the initiative will be moving forward. It's really important to be intentional with this work, so I think having this program in to, to jump-start it, and have the community itself reflect as a way to begin the larger strategy and the plan that we have in place is, will work very well, we're confident. So, ultimately, the vision, I, I put up the acronym for the organization that I was a part of when I was a student, that was in a number of different schools in Nassau County back then. And it stood for two things, it stood for something more in life's experience smile, and it also stood for seniors making it a little easier. I don't know if our club will be seniors-only. I don't, I don't think so. So, we'll see. I want to see how it takes shape. But ultimately, the vision is that the students receive training in, in peer counseling and peer support, and also theater therapy techniques. One of the things that's most powerful that a peer-support club like this can do is actually do skits that reenact situations that students will encounter socially and at school, and have really meaningful conversations around those skits. So, for example, you could see some high school students doing skits around bullying or issues of peer pressure for substance use and things like that, and having real conversations in small groups with students afterward, to help them navigate those situations and develop the tools to promote their own wellness and, and again, the culture of kindness that we have. So, hopefully, within a year, that club, I'll be able to come back here and report that that club is up and running and, and building a profile. And the, the real strategy is that in five years, the students really own it, it's something that they aspire to be a part of, and it seems something integral to the Pearson experience. That's it. Oh, in addition, we've got a local foundation to commit verbally so far to pay for it. And the program is $6,500, and they have verbally committed to give us $7,000, which the $500 will help with some club expenses, which would be great. So, that is the Tyler Project, which is not its own 501(c)(3) yet, so the money would come through the East Hampton Education Foundation.
Thank you, Mr. Green, and, um, questions?
Another question, looks awesome. Love it. Hopefully, we'll be.
I have a few questions. Can you give us a little bit more of the origin of Rachel's Challenge? Where did it come from?
Yeah, so Rachel was the first child killed in the Columbine tragedy in 1999, and her father and brother started the nonprofit originally telling their own stories about her, and that is actually the, the main substance of the first presentation, is telling her story. And it's very compelling, from what I understand. I haven't seen it yet.
And that's a school-wide presentation?
Yeah.
That's one of, one of my questions, because it sounds amazing, and my only fear is that as a club, you only have a couple kids. My question is, how then do we get the message implemented throughout the rest of the school population?
Well, the idea is that day will create a common vocabulary and a common experience that everyone can reflect back on, but as soon as that club is active within school life, doing things ultimately like the, the skits and stuff like that, but also holding group conversations and doing other different things, perhaps even potentially pushing in into different classes, the better. But we, in, in the beginning, it will just be that common experience that everyone shares. And then, the idea is to build the club, to have it sustain that experience and, and build from that work, to really be intentional about building a kind school culture, and also being mutually supportive as a student body of one another's peers.
Another question I have is about overlapping. Do you see any overlapping with other clubs? You know, the students who presented to us a few weeks ago, they seem to have a really good idea about what the school culture is and where it needs help. Is there some way we can combine, so we're not like overlapping efforts and kids are getting different messages thrown at them?
I'm gonna start with those kids. So, I think, I've talked to a few of them about it, and I think that's really, that's already been seeded, and we'll build from that. They gained some tools down in Atlanta, and they have the HUGS support, and we'll, we'll work from there. So, I envision some of those kids being the core at the beginning.
Alex, do you have any thoughts?
No. I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you, guys. We reach out in time, questions or?
Thank you. We will, and hopefully, we will vote on this at our next meeting. Okay, we are up to business items. Can I get a motion to approve business item number one?
So vote.
A second.
Can I get a vote? All those in favor of business item number one?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel actions number two through seven. Can I get a motion?
So vote.
Any discussion on the issues? Okay, then let's vote on personnel actions number two through seven. In favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I congratulate somebody in the audience?
Yes.
Dr. Philip Kenter, congratulations, and welcome to Sag Harbor Schools.
Thank you.
I don't have many else in the audience, but I wanted to make sure, because I was a little heartsick, having lost Jennifer Bouchami, but we welcome you, you're gonna be starting in mid-January, and it'll be really good, because I really don't like being the business, school business administrator right now. Let me tell you, supervising the cafeteria, the business office, and transportation is no fun at all right now, so I can't wait for you to come on board.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to committee reports. First committee to report will be the shared decision-making teams. Mr. Niffles, can we start with you? We'll go through each of the principals, do you want to just give us a brief report?
Sure. So, the shared decision-making committee for the high school has met once. We're required to meet four times during the year, and the first meeting was spent identifying possible topics that we would like to address as a committee this year. The second meeting is scheduled for later this week, actually.
Thank you.
You want to do the middle school, Ms. Hariero?
Yep, so, middle school met already, we're planning to meet in January. The three topics that we discussed, and we're continuing to work on and keeping in contact with our community and culture building to make a middle school field, communication for our middle school parents, because of the transition from elementary to middle school, they feel that the communications will, they want more, but also feel supported. And then, the cell phones, of course, always a hot topic.
The elementary committee is planning to meet after the holiday.
I just want to clarify that there was a question about the shared decision-making team at our previous meeting about whether or not it needs to be district-wide or building level, but according to the law, it is only to building level. Okay, Education Facilities Planning Committee, starting off with the Transportation Committee?
Sure.
Is that you, Mr. Long?
I, yes, I will report, I believe, because we do have the slide.
Well, you know what? We took a slide, and let me give an update on, Jennifer did have two meetings for the Educational Facilities Planning Committee. The first one where she did an overview of where, as Mary, I do hate, Mr. Arby wants to chime in and help me, but she did give an overview of where we are, and just help me if I miss anything. Jennifer had the first meeting of the year, where she gave everyone an update on the different building projects, and I think she, building condition survey as well, where that is, all the things we've taken off, and, and the related costs for all the upcoming projects. And the second one, where she introduced Marcus De Silva to the group and said, here, this is the big list of the building condition survey you're gonna have moving forward. So, I think that's where we are. And, yep, and the next strategies will be, again, keeping them current, we're moving with so many projects in front of us, so. And then, we move to transportation, and we can, we do have a slide for that. Thanks.
Yeah, whatever's best for you.
Thank you.
So, while, while the slide's coming up, thanks, Mr. Fisher, our Transportation Committee is a subcommittee of the Educational Facilities Group. So, therefore, when we had our first meeting, actually, most of our membership is here tonight, Mr. Arbya, Ms. Consala, Tom John, a few other members, we started by reviewing the charter of the Facilities Committee, just because that, that charter applies to this, this ad hoc group. One of the, one of the thoughts that the Board of Ed had asked the committee to weigh in on is the concern that over, probably it's been the last, last couple of years, it's been raised at the elementary building level, and then it has been brought to the Board of Ed by some parents and members of the community, asking us to consider the current busing zone, and whether or not we would, as a school, like to make an adjustment to that, therefore, expanding the offering of busing, and I guess, in turn, decreasing the amount of families who would have to drive or walk to school. So, it's something that we would, as a committee, like to consider, and then be able to help, help the board with that decision. Alongside that, this summer, when we were talking about the, the later start initiative, the idea had been raised to reach out to some transportation consultants that may be able to help us with specific decisions that are being made, as well as maybe taking a, a larger look at the transportation program offered here in Sag Harbor. And at that time, this summer, a request for proposals was made, the district did receive two proposals from consulting firms, and that's something as a committee on November 15th, when we had our meeting, we, we started to take a look at that. As a group, we, we discussed those proposals a bit, and decided that was, it was prudent to reach out to some of the referrals that were listed in those proposals. So, we've been in the midst of that, members of the committee took on that, that role, and have been reaching out via email or phone call. Members of the committee took on that role and have been reaching out via email or phone calls. And we're going to meet again on the 13th, next Wednesday, and plan to further review those proposals and talk about some of the referrals that have been received. And then depending on that conversation, information that's obtained, possibly make a recommendation to you, the Board of Ed, about maybe reaching out to one of those consulting firms and seeing if they would be a good match for the district and a good way to help us with some decisions that have to be made with regards to transportation. In addition, the group brought up some great points that we have a lot of expertise here in the school district, in our transportation department. And some questions were posed to the department. We reached out to Maude and her group and have asked them for some information about specific bus routes, number of students on routes, and specifically how the change in the bus zones might cause us to make some adjustments, adding buses to routes, changing routes that are offered currently, et cetera. So we're going to review some of that data next week as well.
I think that's great. My only question is, have we done one of these outside of reviews in the past?
As far as I am aware, we have not.
Did any other members of the committee wanna speak?
I don't know, we'd say it, you know, we're still evaluating what Matt has introduced to us.
No, it's clear you guys have completely jumped in and hit the ground running. That's really great to see.
And Matt, as I understand it, we possibly want to increase the ridership on our bus routes. To help decrease some of the congestion around the schools perhaps?
Right, right.
On the pickup and drop-off and some other issues as well.
Yeah, which is why we wanna take a look at some of that data that's been provided by the department.
Okay, moving on to nutrition and wellness.
So we weren't able to have our last meeting because I had a stomach bug, so we canceled. So we were well prepared to be wellness-minded. So we'll have our next meeting this upcoming Tuesday, but our committee participants are really on the ground running and they're already been down in the cafeteria trying to beautify it, to make it look nicer. And Ms. Olson's been leading the charge just looking at fabrics, so doing so, even in not meeting.
Moving on next to the policy committee.
Wait, we have diversity and inclusion committee.
We are at the very beginning stages of having conversations regarding what we would like to present to the Board and the school community. We've only met twice so far and we really just want to think through what we would like to present about, what are areas concerned? A lot of things have come up. It's a very big, complicated conversation, so we wanna be very conscientious and what we wanna focus on for this school year.
We've done a lot of training work, because the edification is, we found, substantial. So Mr. Nocso's has been out to train with this Suffolk County School Superintendent. She and our PTA, elementary PTA president are going to another conference with our schools, New York State School Superintendents, because this isn't unique to Sag Harbor. This is really a national conversation that's happening with inclusion and diversity. So our New York State School Superintendent's taken it on. So she's gonna be going to that training as well. We had a teacher go to a training today after school and the second part of it will be in March on simulations and poverty, for our poverty population. So this is the hardest working, I always said my policy committee, I was so proud of, was so hardworking, but I have to tell you, this inclusion and diversity committee, which I co-chair, are so hardworking and are out. Bobby Cohen, another member, went to a training in New York City. So the education that's happening on this committee, I think the Board should be very proud of, because they're giving up their free time to go and learn and understand and come back and teach us all. So we are so much more understanding and understanding the challenges that not only face Sag Harbor and our community, but across the state as well. So I think we're gonna see remarkable things from this committee. Oh, policy.
That would be you.
That would be us. So we have, we've taken on our first policy we're working on right now. It's a policy for medically fragile students. And as is a best practice is to first enlighten your policy committee of what they're looking at. So we spent our first time looking at what is the CSD process? What is an IEP? What is a 504? And we had our principals come, our 504 coordinators. Barbara Beckhamus came and we walked everybody through what is, what does it look like here in Sag Harbor for our medically fragile students? That promoted, then we also talked about, so how do we take care of them? But then how do we communicate that out to every person that has to have that? And we have been some times that we've had to really learn from it not getting communicated or it being fragile. So two areas that we're gonna come back to that again is through, our athletic director has a platform for communicating out to all coaches so that we can increase that. And our head of bus has, would also like to work with our policy committee because of our bus drivers, because they're working with these medically fragile students. So we hope after this next meeting, we should be able to then take what I lovingly call a red pen to our own policy to make it a better policy. So we should, we're hoping probably by February to have something in front of our Board of Education. Our policy committee also has looked at about four other policies from other school districts that were considered by our Bosie Service to be really quality medically fragile policies. So they also got a chance to see what good looks like. A little bit of work being done.
Athletic committee?
We met to reorganize the charter. We decided that we're going to meet three times annually during each high school sports season. We focused on the process of meaningful agenda creation. What came kind of out of that was the creation of an athletic director's student council, if you will, that I've met with once prior to tonight's meeting. And I plan on meeting during each of the subsequent seasons. We also discussed student surveys at the conclusion of each season and how we were gonna disseminate that. We defined the role of the volunteer assistant coach and explored the options on how that position would be evaluated. And one other topic that came up was feeding of athletes as they get set to embark on away contests.
Okay, moving on to Board liaison updates. I'll start. Chris Tice is the liaison to the village. She cannot be here tonight. She apologizes. She's attending the Suffolk County volleyball dinner with her daughter and the rest of the piercing team. But she did meet with Mayor Schroeder last month to discuss the parking situation. And at this point, Mayor Schroeder did advise that when the district does in fact host events that will require increased parking, the village is willing to suspend the no parking restrictions for that event only. So we need to be mindful that the village board meets the second Tuesday each month. So any request from the district needs to be submitted before the meeting so that they can formally take action on the request.
That's very nice.
Yeah, great. Any other liaison committees?
Sure. I have a question about that. What was the position of the village?
Mayor Schroeder advised that when the district hosts events that require increased parking, the village is willing to waive the no restriction, the no parking restrictions for that event only.
Always.
And in order to get the permission, they need to file the request timely with the Board. So we would need a good three weeks' month notice in order to get the parking restrictions waived for that event.
Thank you.
It could be anything.
So I'm sorry, but here's your point of something clarification. Monday is the high school concert.
My answer is no, because you already wouldn't have gotten the request.
No, 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 I know that. It's too late. But that's an example of parents coming to see their children performing, right? So who will take it upon themselves to peruse the calendar of events thirty days in advance and submit that to the village? Would that be Chris?
I think it would have to be administrators.
Because we should do that.
Yeah.
Maybe it can be done once.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. In other words, I know now that I can't park on April 25th, 2018, when the play opens. So.
Right, right.
Okay.
But if we're able to have someone in administration be beyond on the lookout, maybe we file the request all in advance.
Yeah.
I'm sure the mayor would love that.
Okay.
Delegating it to Marcus. Okay, Marcus, that's you.
Okay, so I'll give you a park board update. I have attended all the meetings as the park board liaison. And everything there thankfully is running smoothly. We did have a brief conversation today with the park board president that we will sit down and review, as promised, a multi-year renewal with the park. And we set that date for mid-January. And Katie duly noted that our business administrators could be there. So as soon as everyone's settled in, we will sit down with the park board and talk about a three-year renewal as promised.
I am legislative liaison and we've had a couple of things happen this week, namely the Tax Cut and Jobs Act on the federal level. And this has something to do with us. Very few federal acts have much to do with school districts, except that this one was talking about eliminating the state and local tax deductions for the country. And the House bill had set a maximum of $10,000, whereas the Senate bill had proposed that it get eliminated completely. In kind of last-minute, late-evening negotiations, the Senate agreed to put the $10,000 maximum for property tax deduction in their bill. So that looks like at least we'll get $10,000. However, the New York State income tax write-off would be gone. But I'm sure you are aware of this. It is not done yet. It is in conference committee. So that looks like at least the $10,000 part is going to be still in place. Also, on the state level, Governor Cuomo this week vetoed a bill that would have recognized the Montaukets. We have a significant population of people in this school who have graduated with this school or are part of our community who are Montaukets and they are not recognized by the state yet again. Sad, but true.
Do you wanna give an update on Safe and Sag Harbor?
Oh, sure. So Safe and Sag Harbor has been consistently meeting and I really think they're getting a tremendous amount of traction. We did have, I did attend the forum that they had in Hampton Bays as representative from Sag Harbor, although Eric Bramhoff has been good enough as our wellness director to go to the forums, meetings. It was a tough meeting to sit through, but as far as Safe and Sag Harbor, they've been setting up a very nice calendar of events, of things that are happening. But they're really trying to build, you know, more and more people becoming involved. And we just put together a, I think it's a five-year plan, which really has all 12 sectors having involvement, which is really good. They really made an effort, because what happens is, and they, they're right, the meetings happen here in schools, so we tend to think students, you know, school. And all 12 sectors bear responsibility for changing the culture where our children participate in alcohol at such an early age, much more than, you know, the whole of Suffolk County. And that comes with a change in culture. So they have built a really good plan over the next five years to get all 12 sectors involved. And America, one of the members, John Oppenheimer, Dr. Oppenheimer, made the suggestion that perhaps we don't have all the safe meetings here at the school. But anyway, I think they're really moving in the right direction. I think they have some really good leadership. And I really, you know, think that we're gonna start seeing more and more action on their part, changing culture. So, great. Thank you for that. You know, they have, well, they have a plan in place, which I think that's been something that they've got the leadership and they have a plan.
I think moving the meetings to different sector locations will really enforce the fact that it's not just. Okay, any other liaison updates? Okay, moving on to next agenda item, which is business. One of our very own, Mr. Tommy John Chivaghi, has been elected to the Southampton Town Council and he has advised us that he will be resigning. So we are now at the point of discussing just the process that we are allowed to utilize to fulfill a vacant board seat. At this point, I just wanna describe that there's three options. Under our bylaw, Section 1240, we have the power and the duty to fill the vacancy. So there are three options. One is a special election. Two is an appointment and three is to do nothing. I'll go through each one in detail. We can discuss it. There will be no voting on what we plan to do today. So the first option would be a special election, which would be held within 90 days of the actual vacancy. So looking at this timeline, if we elect to hold a special election at our 1218 meeting, then the public requires 45-day notice. Before that, we have to give the candidates two weeks' notice and another two weeks to file the petition of candidacy. So now we're looking at January 8th, but with the holidays in this full week here, we would probably tack on another week. So once the petitions have been filed, then we have the 45-day public notice requirement. So that takes us to the beginning of March for an election. Then if we hold the election around March, the winner will be sworn in at the next board meeting, which would be March 12th or March 26th. So as a reminder, whoever wins a special election still needs to run in the May 18th general election. So basically, we're looking at a two-month term at most before the winner of the election has to rerun in the general election. Any comments on the special election?
Yeah, is there a price tag that goes, an estimated price tag?
We do have an estimated price tag. We had a...
It's not $11,000, James?
Eleven.
It's $11,000 because it doesn't include the budget, so it would just be the special election. So we're looking at about $12,000 for that election, for a two-month term.
I also believe that there are a few things on that $11,000 or $12,000 estimate that do not have to be done.
It could be related.
That could lower, yes, that could lower that number. So even if it's, you know, 11, give me that in half, some mathematician. Five and a half, right? $5,500. It still seems like a, well, I'm sorry, it's not my turn to give an opinion. Waste of money. Okay, go ahead.
We're discussing.
I know, we're discussing.
They don't like more than two months.
For two months, right.
They would have to start collecting signatures for the next election.
The day after they're sworn in.
Right.
If they wanted to do it.
If they wanted to rerun, correct.
Well, no, they have to.
Yeah.
Because they have to finish out your term, and your term expires on the.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth. So, they have to run, because it's the end of your term.
Right.
Your term will only be two months. If your term didn't expire till next year.
Okay.
Right. In other words, if Tommy John's initial term extended to twenty-nineteen, then I believe, in my opinion, it would be worth investing the money to have a special election, because the person would serve a year and two months.
No.
No, they would only finish out, they only finish out the school year.
No matter what the vacancy leaves, the person would only finish.
Because of the special election.
Not even. That person would, actually, the changeover would be on election night. That's what happened with, we do have precedent for this. I was actually, you know, appointed by the board.
So, how the agenda, we're moving to that.
Let's stay on special election.
Okay, we'll stay on.
I'm sorry, I don't understand. If Tommy John's actual term was not up in June of eighteen, and it was up, I know this is, I'm just, point of clarification. And his actual term was till June of twenty, whoever got appointed would still need to rerun? Okay.
Yes. Or be done.
Learn something new every day. Okay. All right, sorry, I didn't know that. I still think it's a waste of money.
I do, too, but I won't be adding a board.
What?
No, I just, tell me what you're really thinking.
It's a waste of money.
Okay, moving to our second option, we have an appointment option, which requires a majority vote of the full board, and it's only for a term ending with the next annual election. So, that would be, again, till May fifteenth.
Now, we could appoint someone effective December eighteenth?
No.
No.
We will decide which process to use.
Uh-huh.
And then, if we decide to go into the appointment process, we do have president for this, as you were saying. In two thousand fourteen, Mr. Hartnett had relocated outside the district. So, the board had opted to hold interviews during executive sessions, which led to the appointment of Mr. Chavagni. Also, at that time, our attorney did review that, and he circulated a green light memo, so we can get that to all you guys. We have polled other surrounding area schools, and it looks like Sagaponic was the only district to hold an election. Southampton and Shelter Island had opted to leave the seat open. And Patchogue, Hampton Bays, Amagansett, Smithtown, and Bridgehampton all appointed a candidate. So, discussion on the appointment process.
Okay, so here it goes. I would like us not to move in the appoint a candidate route, because I believe that boards are able to function with six members, especially for six months. And regardless of who we appointed, I would think that it would be better for the community to vote in who they would like to see on the board, rather than the board appoint someone. That's my humble opinion.
Yeah.
Besides, I could eat more cookies if there's less people, yeah. I could eat more cookies if there's less people.
They aren't good cookies. There is something to be said for keeping all the seats filled, like tonight, you know, for whatever reason, we have four people here. You know, if this seat was empty, we wouldn't be able to do business, just kind of, you know, for the appointment part. But again, that's going to be your decision.
Oh, you don't get to vote?
You do get to vote. With full board. With full board.
So, in the event that we decide to do nothing, which is your.
Suggestion.
Suggestion, and to wait until the next general election. My concern is that the bylaws do state that we don't only have a power, but we do have a duty to fill the vacancy. I want to kind of discuss that a little bit further with our counsel, to see what he thinks of the duty requirement. Additionally, if we decide to go with that route, there is a chance that the supervisory district's superintendent, not Ms. Graves, it would be the superintendent of Bocees, who would appoint a person to fill the vacancy until the next annual election. Or the commissioner of education could appoint someone until the next election. Seeing as our timeline is so curt, I don't see that happening. But like I said, I would like to further flush out the duty requirement with our attorney.
I'm sorry, I don't know all those rules. I'm sorry, Alex, because you were going to say something. But I know currently Southampton is running with six, and did not appoint and did not spend money on a special election. And I think their timeline and the vacancy seat was longer. And I thought I understood, as long as we can conduct business and keep the district moving, I never heard all those restrictions you just threw out prior. So, when you get more info, I'd be.
Well, it's our bylaws that state that we have a duty. Other districts have. Southampton, Shelter Island have left it open until the next election. Like I said, with our timeline, I don't see Bocees or the state head controller coming in and appointing someone. So, I don't think that's a reality for us. But again, I think we should discuss the legal duty and see where that falls.
Stephanie, a lot of that comes from districts who were in some bad shape, as far as being on the board, large districts, and people resign, and then they have three-three ties, and the state steps in and appoints somebody to, you know, make it an odd number.
You can't conduct business.
That the school district can do business.
Right, that's kind of what I thought, as long as.
I don't foresee that here.
Right, as long as we can move ahead and conduct business. But Alex, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I agree with Stephanie. I think the idea of spending money on a special election so someone can serve for two months and then turn around and run again doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. And so, I think, subject to hearing a compelling reason otherwise from the attorney, that we probably ought to just leave it open and let the public decide in May if we want to fill the seat.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so we will hold that over till the next meeting, when we have some more board members here, and make a final vote on which process we decide to go with. Any unfinished business? No. Okay, public input number two. Is there anybody who would like to address the board for public input number two? You know the drill.
Yes, I do. For the Stella's, I see you guys this day for nothing. For the Stella Maris, plans that you're setting up to state, we have a circle going up Love Lane and around the back for drop-off and pickup, correct?
Yeah, there's an exit, the access drive along the back parking lot's connected to both streets.
Yeah. So, have we met with the village and discussed that with them, since they're having issues with their traffic control?
With their transportation department, yes.
And they're all, they think it's a good idea?
They're on board with our application for that, yes.
Okay, that's good. That was a question. Second thing, that's all I have in Stella Maris, because I already know that the floor's not getting fixed and the playground's not in project, so I already know that, so I'm good on that one. Erin made a comment during our athletic committee meeting, which was kind of, just kind of briefed over, and I think it's a serious issue, that there is no eating on the bus. So, these kids are getting out of class. They're getting out of academic support. They haven't eaten since ten-thirty, twelve, and they're not getting any food until they get home. That's a problem for an athlete. Mother of two collegiate athletes, that would never work in my house. So, I don't know what the reason is, but I think that the board needs to have a serious, open, public discussion, because borderline child abuse in my house. That's a serious problem. And I don't know if Ms. Graves can answer why that is. I don't have any children at this point that play sports, but I know my son, the play, he's at Harbor Market in between rehearsals, and he's only six. So, that I think needs to be discussed. Second of all.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I said, I'm good.
That's what the committee's discussing.
Did I brought it up?
No, we're not. No, we did, we brought it up, and we don't know where it's going.
It was one of the, there's two parts to this answer, and the other part, I can't, I'm not going to be able to do instant recall on. But the second part is the, we have students with, which is the medical conditions that we're reviewing right now in policy, is that we have students with profound, profound allergies, not allergies, and other types of allergies. And students are eating on the buses at night, and the buses are pulling in, and they're not getting substantially wiped down, and there's things with allergies on them. Doesn't mean we can't fix that.
Yeah.
We just have to, we have to just work on that, and make sure that we're paying someone to make sure those buses get wiped down and get cleaned. But it's a change.
Well, yeah, I would hope so, because like I said.
But we can't, but just to be clear, we, there's, the other side of that coin is that if children are eating on those buses, and those buses pull in, and it's six o'clock in the morning, a child gets on that bus that is so medically fragile, that they were eating a pita butter sandwich on the bus the night before, we're not going to put our children at risk on that side of it, too. So, as of everything, as you know as a former board member, things are complicated.
I, I'm not going to say it's not, but I'm going to say that's probably happening now, and we're unaware of it, so we're actually putting kids at risk. Then, number two, number three is the calendar. I would just hand the calendar over to the village office, to the mayor. I think that would just take care of parking situations for nights. And the table's set up. I had spoken to Madam President privately. We can't see, we see Mr. Graveman and Ms. Tice's back constantly. We can't hear. The podium is here, so that your backs are not to us. Yeah, their backs are to us during most of the meeting. I recommend trying to figure out another design, because this one's, when you're in the audience, you can't hear and you can't see.
I think we're using microphones.
We can't, I can tell you that tonight, we've been hearing.
Actually, with technology, we've been through this. And I spent Saturday morning watching us on channel twenty-two. You can hear better without the microphones, because we have an all-encompassing mic. And this is a meeting that happens in public, but this is not a public meeting. This is the Board of Education's meeting. The public is allowed to be here, but this is the board's meeting. And we are shaped this way so that we can catch it, so that I can get up on Sunday morning and watch myself on channel twenty-two. It's a terrible experience. My husband hears my voice come through at about four o'clock in the morning sometimes, and it's frightening for him, because I have a lot of insomnia. So, you can see us on channel twenty-two. It's, this is, you know, this is a board meeting that's getting videotaped, and we don't have the microphones out anymore, because the all-encompassing mic, which we vetted through the technology department, actually picks up better than the one-to-one mics, because those were terrible.
Do we have anyone else for public input number two? Come on up.
Jim Kier, high school math teacher and president of the Teachers Association of Sag Harbor. We had a, teachers had a recent request of the board to be, we are in the midst of contract negotiations, and we had a request in for the board, the entire board, to be at our next negotiation session. The answer was no, even though it doesn't violate meeting laws for the board, and that we could write a letter explaining why we want the board to be there. And I don't think that we ought to have to explain why we would like you there. Rather, I would like to hear why you don't want to be there.
I will answer you first, but I think there may have been a miscommunication, because my understanding was that individual teachers were contacting individual board members. I have not heard anything about an invitation for the entire board to come to the next negotiations. And if that's something that.
No, there was. It was a thrust thing, and it was a recommendation of the attorney to let him have that authority. That was his recommendation.
I don't have anything about an invitation for the entire.
I can, we even put it as the entire board, but.
Yes, yes, we did. We invited the entire board to our next negotiation session, and the response was no.
I think we put it out, and I, this may be my mistake, for board members to sit at the table, for board members, not the entire board, so.
Our invitation was specifically the entire board.
My understanding was that two board members were separately invited, or, my understanding was, you know, that wasn't my understanding of the situation. If I'm wrong, of any other board members?
No, I understood that two board members individually, Jim, were approached directly, two out of seven. So, I didn't understand that either, that the entire board was invited. But it's okay if that decision.
No, but that's not how we.
Well, in any event, there is.
Are you serving cookies?
Yes.
I'm just trying to lighten up the.
There is an invitation from the Teachers Association for the entire board to be at the next negotiation session. There's our desire to eliminate any kind of misunderstanding or miscommunication that possibly is existing now, in my mind. And I'm being very careful, learning from the past, to not bring negotiations out in the public. But the way I'm thinking through the way this has been, the only thing that makes sense to me is that there is some sort of miscommunication or misunderstanding between the board and us, and our hope is that if you are there, that could be eliminated.
I'm sorry, is there a date set for this?
The thirteenth, next Wednesday.
And we had opted for traditional avenues of communication. That's what we decided on doing.
I'm sorry.
We had to, I'm sorry, I was talking while we had decided, we had opted for the traditional avenues of communication between negotiations, to stay with that.
And we did, we understand that, but we feel we're at the point where that needs to change.
Okay, seeing as the different side of your request, we will definitely take it under advisement. And the meeting is when? The thirteenth?
Mm-hmm. Three-thirty.
Again, we'll take it under advisement, and it may be possible to have a mediator present. I don't think that we'd be able to go forth as a board this way, but I think we need to speak with the attorney and clarify some of those issues, because I, that is not my understanding of the invitation. I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input number two?
I'd like to add, with respect, of course. I just want to say that in the beginning of the year, the school board got up and said we wanted to have public input one, we wanted to have public input two, we want the public here, we want to hear what they have to say. So, I'm telling you, that is a challenge to sit in here, and I'm here most meetings, most people are not. And I'm being told that I can watch it at four o'clock in the morning. I don't find that respectful, nor do I find that inviting. Thank you.
I just, I don't think anyone has said you can watch it at four o'clock in the morning. Public input one has changed, you know that, because you're usually here, and it's to open it up to people. I think the comment was just now.
You have to look at me when you're talking.
I'm talking to everyone, not just you. But I think that the comment was made about specific to technology and how that operates.
I think also the point that this is a board meeting, open to the public, and not.
It's a meeting that happens in public. So, and the four o'clock, it's just simply that this is for, we record this, so everyone can watch this at any time.
On YouTube.
On YouTube, at any time. This board meeting is available for everyone, and you can even watch it, if you don't have that capability, you can watch it on channel twenty-two as well. So, there's multiple opportunities to watch this meeting. So there's multiple opportunities to watch this meeting over and over again. Okay.
That, those two chairs are difficult. I mean, I sat there for a couple of years, and I used to turn around, if you both remember, because the podium used to be here. And so I felt bad when Nada came to have my back disres, and I used to turn around. So I, in a big mouth, I could sit there and turn around for the next six months that I'm here. Go ahead.
Any other public input number two? Say your name, go back there. You have two minutes.
Okay, great. I'm Lori Morrison. I just wanted to comment on the Stella Maris progress and say that I'm really happy to see that it's progressing and that there's movement. I know that it was a big undertaking for the school to get the building, and I think that what you presented, gentlemen, today was really excellent. I love the motif, the whole idea of the nautical theme for the inside. And I just wanted, as a personal opinion to voice, that I really like the name Stella Marist as well. I know that it most likely will not stay the same name, but I'm wondering if it can be considered to incorporate it in some way, either the Stella or the Marist, or in some way to preserve that, that name, you know, in some, in some fashion.
I think, you know, that's something I had thought about as well. And we had learned at one of our past meetings that Stella Maris, although the problem is that it tends to be associated with a religious school, the English version is Star of the Sea, which I personally find is really kind of cool.
Exactly, exactly. That's why I look at two.
But that is something that we can discuss when we decide on how to move forward with the naming process.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else?
No, the original name was St. Andrews, and it was changed to Stella Maris in the 1980s.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. That's not the original name.
I like Star of the Sea. It has a nice little S-O-S.
Stella's Sag Harbor, that's my vote.
Do we have any other comments on public input number two?
No.
If not, then can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move.